Please stand for an invocation. While we ask you to look after the crew town council and the town of Crew, provide your guidance and lessons on us as we do people's work. As this is National Police Week, we also seek your blessings on all police officers and your protection on all of our police officers, particularly those in the town of Crew at risk of their lives on a day-to-day basis, patrolling the streets against an ever-increasing crime activity. This is the month of May and the 75th anniversary of the Second World War. We seek your remembrance and blessings on all those who served in the Second World War, including our many dead from the town of Crew. With that in mind, we seek your blessings in all we do. In Jesus' name, amen. Please join me in praise.
Praise be to the Lord, to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is a public hearing for the 2019-2020 budget. I need, since I forgot the verbiage, I need a motion that we waive the official reading of the 2019-2020 budget call.
So good.
We have a motion, we have a second. All the county may say aye.
Aye.
All the county may say aye. All right, with that in mind, we now begin the public hearing on the 2019-2020 budget. Does he want anyone wishing to speak for or against? Yes, ma'am. Make sure she did it anyway.
Tiffany, stand for pose.
Yes, ma'am. Take a shot in the dark on who you are.
I'll do that for everybody. Well, I know when I have to.
Thank you, Mr. Vanier. I just have a few questions. I was able to get a copy, a detailed copy of the budget. First of all, I saw this on the board.
Yes, ma'am.
That was in the paper. So these are some general comments. And keep in mind, I'm still sort of learning the lay of the land here in Crew. And so I have, first of all, let me say this. I've done consulting work for several small communities in the Midwest, Iowa, Illinois, Indiana, and generally, public servants are underpaid.
Yes, ma'am.
So when I looked at the salaries, you need a raise, you need a raise, you need a raise. But we can't, recognizing that the budget is what it is, we have to be cognizant of what can we do to generate additional revenue. So with that in mind, these are the things that I wanted to talk generally about. First issue is the airport.
Yes, ma'am.
It seems to be operating at a deficit.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, but I noticed that what was proposed for 2019-20 is essentially the same amount of money. So what can we do to generate revenue as it relates to the operation of the airport? I know some small communities charge hangar fees, leasing fees, assesses on the fuel. So according to the FAA, Crew gets 90 flights a week. I don't know if that's correct, but that's the data that they have.
Yes, ma'am.
And so we should maybe look at ways that we can generate additional revenues so that if it doesn't make money, at least we're even.
Yes, ma'am. We have, do you want to address that? You can address it. Okay, we, we do have hangar fees.
Okay.
And we've had a longstanding policy that is just recently, where people built hangers and then they got, basically, rather than charge them rent, they gave the hangars to town and they just counted it every month. We're down to two hangers like that now, and once that's over, it's done. We're no longer willing to do that. We do also charge for fuel. We make a little profit on the fuel. We get 80% of the funding that goes into the airport is reimbursed by the state aviation agency.
Okay, so are you also getting any money from the county or the federal?
County might give us any money. I think it was proposed once before, at least once, and they reap taxes off the property, but we don't, we don't. We have discussed that, but probably haven't pressed it as hard as we should. I might reconsider that, though, it's a good idea.
All right. There's only $3,000 allocated for any of the development activities, which seems fairly low.
Yes, ma'am.
I know that the county is focused on bringing large industry to the area, but we need retail business here in the town of Crew. Our downtown is dying.
Yes, ma'am.
And so there is, I know the community has all the block rate funding has been cut drastically. Both Department of Transportation, EPA, USDA, and the Department of Commerce still has money available for small-town development, and perhaps maybe we can invest some dollars.
Are you willing to volunteer your time to show us that stuff?
Certainly am after July 1st.
After July 1st, okay.
Quiet business is out of the way.
Because one of the great, and just in fairness to everybody, so you know, we had discussed before, Ms. Vanier said again, she was a grant writer.
Yeah.
And now that she's living in town, hopefully we can tap your talent.
Personally, living in town. I just got back in town after being off for four days trying to take care of business elsewhere.
Let me address economic development, though. That is generally, it's a joint effort between the three towns and the county that goes, that basically, the county runs the show, they fund most everything. Our money has been used for supplemental items, for example, what's the map that you did last year, the piece that you did last year that you gave the money to? You worked with Blackstone on the marketing piece.
Oh, right, tourism map.
Right, it was a tourism map.
Right.
But we don't, we put our money into that the year before. But most of the economic development is coming through the county, and we work as mayor, there's usually a mayor and a member of council that's also part of that committee from the three towns, so we're actively engaged from that element. The retail business has been a great challenge. We have discussed it, we have reached out to various retail businesses. Every time I go into a moderate grocery store, I ask them, what do we have to do to get to Crew? And it's usually the same answer, they want to have X number of people around in the surrounding area. One of the challenges that we face is that because all the major chains are situated within that area from us, we're considered part of Amelia's clientele, we're considered part of the Cambridge and Blackstone clientele, and also the Farvalle clientele, and they don't want to compete with themselves by putting somebody else here, another store, basically. Put Miami or Farvalle. They're not telling, we've reached out to Provo, we've reached out to Public, we've reached out to, not Aldi, but to something like Aldi.
So then maybe what, when our focus should be on encouraging small businesses?
Yes, ma'am.
To start here as incubators, coffee shops, things that will provide services.
Yes, ma'am, and the economic development up at the county level does have incubators available, they work that element.
Okay. All right. Lastly, I noted that there were a few sort of budget outliers where there seemed to be a large increase from this year to what's proposed for next year. Water system improvement jumped. Dues appears in several places, but there's no explanation as to what that's for and how that's going to benefit.
We paid Virginia Municipal League dues.
Okay.
What else do we pay? We pay, is there a police association? Fire department, emergency services.
Such a general criminal justice academy.
Right, I think the criminal justice academy. We, everybody, everybody in the region participates with Criminal Justice Academy, so those dues go to that. Criminal Justice Academy then allows us to send new hires, police officers there for six months of training so they can be certified as police officers.
All right, credit card fees.
Yes, ma'am.
They do, too.
We could have a little.
Who's processing your credit card present is there another opportunity for somebody else to compete for your business?
We have not, have we been there?
We're getting ready to change them.
We have, we have changed. The company that we changed to was after, I had already done that, so I don't know where we will be as far as how much it will cost. But their rates are less than the company that we were using.
And we've also discussed fees.
Okay. Police Department central dispatching costs jumped considerably.
Yes, ma'am. Dispatching is run out of Nottaway County.
Okay.
The three towns participate with the county, the three, in fact, it was a question that came up by one of the council members this week. The amount of money that the three towns pay, the county does not pay full salary for a single dispatcher.
Okay.
So it's really a very small amount, but based on per capita, the county does the figuring on what the, what the numbers are, and then they send us a bill. But there's like 15 dispatchers and we only.
Yeah, I paid for one.
Right, we're not even paying for one.
Okay.
I mean, the three towns combined did not pay.
So where is the additional money coming from? The state or?
County.
State.
Animal control seems to be zeroed out. Every time I go out, there's, to run, there's some dogs.
It's county responsibility. The county is responsible for animal control, they have two people on payroll.
Okay.
So we took our man off. We have a man on it part-time, and when they hired the new hire, there was some question as to whether they were going to service Crew. And we said the taxpayers are crew, we're not the county taxpayers, and they deserve county services as well, so we zeroed out our budget on that.
Okay. Lastly, Darrellitt Buildings was cut by $10,000, and the last meetings that I've gone through, there's been a lot of discussion about property that's.
We had about 150 in that fund, right?
Right, so each year with the Darrellitt Building Fund, any money that's left over gets rolled over into a separate camp. So that counts currently at about 150, or 100, 150 or so.
Okay. Now one last thing, because I did quickly scan the minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
I noticed you have a proposal for a landlord registry.
Yes, ma'am.
Might I suggest that the council consider a registration process where they have to pay? That would enable you, number one, to charge a fee for anybody that is renting property out, give you an opportunity to pay for an inspector to go in and look at the property to make sure that it isn't up to code before people move in, so that later on you don't have the issue of going back and trying to deal with the property after the fact that may not be habitable or up to code.
I love you. You know Wendy, I love her more. That's all I have to say.
Just right here.
I worry.
I take points on that.
Do you know of any other municipalities that have that type of thing?
Yes, I just.
Which, I figured you, I figured you probably did.
Yes.
What?
You're required to have a license.
Are they?
Yes, for a property.
Are they in Virginia?
No, Maryland, but I'll check Virginia and see what's available.
Unfortunately, Virginia is a deluge state, so we can only do what the general assembly allows us, so something like that, our town certainly have to overlook, too.
There has to be a way. There's always a way, so.
Is that landlord, like I say, most of those are responsible? You are responsible, I will say. You are very responsible.
This is a budget hearing, do you have any comments on the budget?
No, I thought it was public delegation.
You're not there yet?
Not yet, there?
Not yet.
Oh, my gosh.
Any other comments on the budget? Any other comments on the budget? Very good. Counsel, any comments on the budget? Very good. With that in mind, we have to take no action. The budget hearing is closed. All right, at this time we have delegations from the public and citizens' comments. This is Jake.
Always.
Yes, ma'am.
Ask him, he'll tell you. Three things tonight. I want to announce that the Watch Bucket Initiative is having a fundraiser on August 4th, and we're going to be honoring veterans that night. And it's turning into be a pretty good program as we work through it, so just letting you know. That'll be put out in all the local rags and we'll announce that. I have a question about all the abandoned vehicles in town. I'm getting, you asked me to get you an email, I did not do it, but I can. I again have another abandoned vehicle down the street from me that's been sitting there. No one's done a thing. We have an abandoned vehicle across from town hall. Why is it sitting across from town?
That one has been addressed.
It has been addressed, okay. I've had a community, or somebody from the community may comment on that three or four times. I don't understand why it's so difficult to not just simply find these people and haul these lousy cars away, and let them pay.
It's a whole lot more than that. It's not like. Where are we going to hire them for?
Take them to the junkyard, I don't care. But why should they be junking up our town?
It's not as easy as you would think.
Okay, well, but they're junking up our town, and it seems to me that they need to be, we really need to address this because there's a lot of abandoned cars around town.
I don't disagree with you, but it's like a lot of these houses that need to be torn down, that they're property, there's somebody's property, and there's legal hoops that we have to jump before you can see them.
I understand. And I think, I know the answer to this, I've been directly back to the county, but here, not more than a couple of weeks ago, we had a dog hung himself from a chain, which just absolutely sickens me, these people that put these dogs on chains and leave them there, and, and these poor animals who live out in the weather, in the storms, and.
Did you report it to animal control?
I did not. I didn't know whether the town had heard about it, but the dog was hung himself from a chain. And I just think that's just cruel, cruel, and I think it needs to be dealt with.
Yes, ma'am, but you hear that, you need to report that to animal control, and they can come out and they can write a ticket.
Well, I'll make sure that happens. They'll charge the people with that. They need to be charged for that, for the cruelty when that happens. This just absolutely sickens me, it happened just down the street.
And that officer can do that. He has the authority to do that, through their law enforcement.
Okay, well, I can make sure that gets reported. Outside of that, quite happy.
Good deal. Mr. Vanier.
I just, I need tonight because I don't want anybody to go through what I went through at my house last night. I had surgery, I came downstairs, I've been sleeping on the sofa. And at 12 o'clock last night, I heard giggling, and kids in my yard, they jumped up on the porch, and they literally beat with their hands the police in. When he came, it looked like they also kicked the door with their feet, and then they ran away. And this is not the first time. It has happened at 2:00 in the morning. It has happened one night, we were watching TV, at 8:00 at night, and it happened then. It's been going on now for a couple of years. And after they left our house, they went to Norman Bubba Spences and did the same thing. But I, the one time about a month ago, when it happened, we were in there watching TV, it was 8:00 at night, and I called down to Nottaway, and the girl said, so let me get this straight, they knocked on your door, and that's all they did. And I said, well, if you could understand what this was like, well, all right, I'll get an officer up there. And the police have come every time. But there's nothing we can do because we can't, we don't see them. As soon as they do it, they take off. Then David gets in his truck, sometimes I've gotten in my car and ridden around. But anyway, so I called back down to Nottaway after I talked to the police, and I told her, I said, honey, I just want you to know, that was very degrading to me. Oh, no, no, Ms. Reck, that's not what, I said, well, you said it's all they did was knock on the door. I said, it's, it's not a knock, it's beating. And last night, I think it was like maybe three or four beating at the same time. I usually have a big wreath on my door, and I didn't have it on there last night, and so they had more area to cover. And I can't, I can't even, if it had, if the deadbolt had not been on, well, it always, if that deadbolt had not been on, they would have come like in my living room, there's no death in my mind. Sleeping down there, the past few weeks, 2, 3:00 in the morning, there are kids bouncing basketballs, I'm down the street. They're over here on this playground. This side of the library has always had lights on at night, there have been none. I got concerned, a couple of nights I saw lights on in here, and I called down to Nottaway, and they said, is somebody cleaning like 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning? And I said, well, okay, you know, whatever, I was just concerned, got to go to bed, and saw lights, but anyway. And there are just, you know, there are just a few things. The playground, I have watched drug deals go down, somebody comes along and puts like a lunch bag in the porta john, and then you wait a few minutes and somebody else will drive up, go to the porta john, open and get a lunch bag, you know, you'd have to be crazy not to know what's going on. The house across from me is empty, the house beside us is empty, it's been foreclosed on, nobody lives there. But David and I have watched, this lady came and tied her dog to the tree in the yard, and she went over to the porch and got something, untied the dog and walked away. Couple hours later, here comes these two guys, they went up on the porch, they got something, and they walked away. So we called the police, and they came, and they went around the house, well, on two different doors, the house had been broken into. They had kicked the panels of the doors, so they called the daughter of the lady who used to live there, and she came, and sure enough, they had been in and stolen a lot of things out of there. For years, we have never locked our house. Because working with young people, I have told them, if there's an issue and you need a place to stay, you can get in our house and you'll be safe till we get back and we help you take care of whatever the situation is. We can't do that anymore. And I have never been afraid here, we've lived here over 30 years, but I'm afraid now, I really am. There's a van, has New York tags, it's all bended up, it comes, and there is no turn in the speed by the time it gets up my street to this playground. Some men get out, there's no children, there are no children. And they go over to the playground, and then somebody else comes, no children, you know, and it just, okay, and then these older kids on the playground. The fence is so nice, they tore it down, so then Tony and them put up these new rods around the top and tried to fix it. All that climbing equipment, they don't want to do that, they climb on the fence, and they've torn it off this side again. And it's older kids, the sign says the age limit, and there's teenagers. You know, I, I don't know people, the sign says no pets, and they take dogs in there. So these mamas with their little ones come by my house, and then I'll see them come back, and I'll say, well, gosh, y'all been saving the playground, Mom. Ms. Reck, we can't stay over there, those kids' language was terrible. David and I were in our yard the other day, right around our hedge where the cement steps are, these women and, and their children were sitting out there. And it was F this and F that. So I stepped around the edge of, into the hedge, and I said, hi, I just want to let y'all know we're in the yard. Well, what the F do I care about that? I'm not in your F-ing yard. You know, and it's just, and it, and it's not once a week, it's almost every day we have to deal with this. And David has, he's going to tell you, but I'm breaking glass all over, you know, because nobody lives there, you know, the shots live, nobody's in that house, whose shot comes across the street from us, nobody's there, the house sucks, nobody's there. And then that street has been blocked off for over a year. And I've heard all about that, VOD says this, landowner says this, and blah, 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 again, and nobody can do anything. But here's the thing, and I, I saw it the other day, people do not pay any attention to the road closed sign. All right, so one car was coming up the hill, another one was coming from this way, and then a car was coming out of Russell Street. And I just knew, and one coming this way slammed on brakes, and I just knew it was going to be, somebody was going to be killed. And that's, don't you want to live in my house? I mean, you know, that's what we have to look at. Okay, so we would like to sell our house and move out to the country, want to build it there. But who would buy it, okay, with what's next door falling apart, and this house back here, and we've had several discussions about that? You know, it's just, it's really hard. And I'm, some people have said, well, let's just get rid of the playground. That's not the answer, because there are lots of mamas and little ones who've come over there, and we fought for a long time to get that playground, and it's a good place. But I just need the police to walk and ride by and walk, and come without a car sometimes to see what's going on. And to get these, we have ordinances, curfew for these children, and they should not be known, and their SOL schools are so bad. They should not be walking around on these streets at night, 12:00, 1:00, 2:00 in the morning. And if I, I'm afraid to say anything because one time we got our house egged. So you know, if I say, hey, guys, can y'all please not bounce a basketball 2:00 in the morning in front of my, that's the repercussion. And I know people keep saying, well, you need to put up a security system, you need to buy cameras, and we're poor, you know? And all of that would cost a lot of money. And I just feel like if we could just, and every time I've called them, the police have come, they really have, and they've been very kind, and just like the, the day the guy jumped out of the car, they ran and hit a porch next door. What is my husband doing? He goes out and bought, oh, it's a C's guy. So, and he did, and he watched him run around there. So when the police came, he said, he's over there, that's where the, with the dog, and that's where the guy. So you know, we're willing to do whatever we can do. And more knows, we have tried really hard through the years, you know, we have this because I wanted it, this building, and I worked hard to get it. And I just feel like we're just being this tree to be for mamas.
Mr. Vanier.
David. Just to reiterate a little bit, like, I talked with police chief, this was more, and my suggestion then, maybe, like Francis said, leave the car somewhere else, and possibly because when you know of a problem area, that's the area that needs to be addressed. And so with us, I mean, we live here, we see that, but they can check the CAD system and see the number of calls that's come from our area as well, so that can be more prudent there. But we have a problem area, I think, this is a suggestion, maybe, I think you hit on it, Wendy, earlier, instead of having two police officers in the daytime sometime, maybe put more at night, and spend a few hours down here a day a week, and just to see what's going on, like leaving cars up there and just walking in, because it's getting nice weather. I mean, I plan on trying to be outside a little bit more late at night, and the weather's better, so I can see what's going on, and, you know, I don't know, but I can record anything because I don't have anything to record, and then it's dark, it can look too. But that's what I was suggesting, she mentioned Russell Street, you know, part of the foot traffic, it's constant, I guess, from.
Seemart.
Seemart, Sunoco, wherever it is. Coming down Russell, sometimes through our yard, but the litter, the trash, broken glass on Russell Street between the two houses that drive in, the playground again, trash all over the place, up against the trash cans, stuff in the trash can. And it's really sad, and I mean, I don't, I'm not saying the council can fix that because I understand, you know, you can't control it, nobody does. But it just concerns me because it's trash up in my yard, parents that don't make their kids, teach their kids life. But possibly more police presence at different times, if we can adjust that maybe on occasion can help, so if they see somebody littering, tell you, you need to clean that up, I'm going to have to issue a summon for littering. This might help, this suggestion.
Thank you, Mr. Vanier.
I did have one more question. I know homecoming is this weekend, and I know I personally am getting tired of Old Bean, drugstore there looking like it looks, and I just don't understand, and I told David, that was us, we would have gotten a warrant, a summons, everything else, and we would have been made to fix it. I don't understand why people can get by with something like that. It's dangerous, and it's totally an eyesore. And she was talking about Main Street, you know, it's so sad. I grew up here, and I could tell you where every store was, and the sweet people that ran them and everything else, and what we had here. And you used to could ride around town, and you'd say, Mr. Someone, so lived here, and here, and here. And I call them slum landlords, honest and truly, it's what I call them. If you have a pulse, they let you get in the house. And over here, this, when the Montgomerys moved out, and they threw all the furniture they didn't take with them, they threw it out in the yard, and nobody did anything. But yet, the house, well, the house beside us, the house across the street, got notes on them, if you don't cut your grass, you're going to have to pay the town $200. Well, I'd almost rather see long grass than see sofas and all this crap. And it's been cleaned up, I guess they got a note or whatever, but you know, it's just stuff like that, that when people, I know I shouldn't say this, please don't hate me. When you ride through Blackstone, I know that's a bitter taste in everybody's mouth in Crew, it always has been, but when you ride down the street, those beautiful lights and all that's there, the stores, even if there's one that's closed, at least it's painted, it's fixed up, you know, that's the thing. And I know years ago, we wanted to put those lights down the street, and the mayor said, somebody's going to come along to the baseball bat and break everyone off. So that's how we ended up with those old.
Were you on council? No, it wasn't, at that moment, it was the cost of it. It was that particular.
Well, it was that, too, because I already said.
Putting it underground.
Were you on council then?
No, I was never on council, I ran, but I didn't get there. But anyway, it just, you know, it, the thing of it is, is we all need to work together to get this place so people, you know, the home, like I said, homecoming is Saturday, and you'll have all those booze and stuff downtown, and those visits, some of them smell When you walk, like, if you walk the street, you walk by, it's just, you know, it's like a sewer almost coming out of some of these places. So, I don't know, I don't know whose responsibility that is or who's supposed to pay for it, I know petty is always a big thing, no money, no money, you know? Good Lord in mercy. And, and I was on a committee one time to make this town handicap with the sidewalks. Everyone in the sidewalks, I was on that committee where they slamming like this, and look at them now, and look at them now. There's no way in God's world that Tara Robertson can come and go through this town in her wheelchair. She'd break her neck.
Um, on the drug activity that you mentioned, did you report that to the police?
I sure have, every time.
Okay.
And I've been told, I told them who I saw, and this is what I get told, and I told whoever the policeman was came last night. But Ms. Redford, they're an informant, okay? Then the next policeman comes, and I said, alright, this is who I saw, da da da. But Ms. Redford, he's an informant, so I told.
Have you got records of this that you can share with me?
That cat that came last night to our house, I told him, I said, I can just have one question. How many informants are there in this town? You know, and they can't all be informants, somebody needs to get arrested for this.
Who, who, have you got names that you can give to me? I'll chase this down because I'm the same way, I don't care if they're informed or not, if they're doing business in this town, they gotta go to jail.
Okay.
Real simple, so if you've got names?
Yes, sir.
You give them to me.
Alright.
And I'll, I'll engage.
I will.
The people that need to be engaged.
And the thing with the Porta John and those kids trying to turn it over, I think they've done something now. I think it might be folded or something.
I think it is, yeah.
Down so they can't turn it over anymore, because they put, they put one child in there, and then the teenagers try to turn it over with the child in it. And the child is screaming, Mark, they're no parents, ever, over there, very, very seldom do you see parents.
The New York plates, did you get good plate numbers, or just, you just run them from New York?
It says New York on it, I don't know the number, but it's all beat up and it, if you give me ten minutes, it'll write it on it, because it's just constant.
If you can get the plate, give me the plate.
Okay.
We will chase this down as well.
Okay.
Uh, the street, uh, I think I briefed you on that every time, I've got something that is a VOD issue, VOD is working on it, they've got to engage landowners to, to make the fix.
But how long is that going to take? It's been over a year.
I, I know, I know, but they've only come up with a plan, they've only just released something, come up with a plan, and we've had to push them on it.
Alright, well, if we could get some more barrels, because the barrels that were there, so they could not go, they ran over them and squashed them, and they may do it again. But honest and truly, it needs to be, and it's like David said, nobody lives between where that hole is and the top, okay? There are no driveways, so nobody needs to come through that area. You know, because the horns go out the other way and, so.
We kind of want them to keep it half open for fire protection, that's it.
I think, we could move the barrels a little faster, just trying to keep cars from, because what they do, they come up the hill on the wrong side of the road, and a lot of times they're moving. And so like, like he said, once the witnesses, if somebody's coming the other way where they're supposed to be coming, it's gonna be too late.
With that hill, you can't sit, when you're coming up and sit, like I said, they're on the, they're on the left-hand side of the road coming up, because they can't drive them up.
And put them back in the road and they still.
Okay. Can you get VOD, tell VOD tomorrow, get them to get more barrels out, they're gonna do it together, block it out. Uh, when I heard about your, uh, incident, I, I got on the phone with the town manager just as soon as I heard about it. And, uh, he has engaged the chief of police, and they will be increasing patrols amongst other things, uh, in this area. Uh, they are, as you know, in the neighborhoods now more than they used to be. Uh, they are patrolling the streets, we know that deterrence is a major part of, of keeping crime down. Um, unless we can catch them, if there's anything else, gotta catch them. Uh, I've got a extra game camera, I can loan you, if you would like to put it up somewhere, we might know, get some images of them.
I've, I put one up at one point, I need to put it back up, but the problem is in somebody else's yard and I don't know what they dig out.
So we could get a good shot, but anyway.
If you can advise me on that, I'll be glad to use.
And lights on this side of this library need to be.
Tell them you took the picture for you.
The outside lights all the way down, they used to.
You're talking about the overhead lights?
Yeah, they used to come outside.
The Virginia power lights?
Under the, under the lighting on the building.
The library lights.
Okay.
And they're, they used to be on a timer, I don't know how it works now.
They're all the time, okay, but they keep breaking.
The, the bulbs.
Okay.
So that's, that's what it is?
That's part of the thing.
Well, see, that's the thing, and then they urinate all the time, y'all.
Can we get sort of, cameras?
You could actually get you a camera that has a little beeping red light that doesn't actually take pictures and would tear them as much as anything.
Well.
We talked about that before. Because you go in, you go in the grocery stores and you see all those bulbs on the wall at a Walmart, only about half of them got cameras in it, but you don't know which are.
Honest to God, you could go to Costco right now and get a nice security system for less than $300 to cover, to cover every corner of this building.
Is that a motion?
Um, they'll run all the time, run on a hard drive.
No, you said, is that a motion? Are you making a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion.
The Lennox also still has the same system for all the cheaper.
Well, I've been saying several times that Derek, I got trail cameras that'll send a dang on email in real time to me when somebody walks by your trail camera. And I think that's a worthwhile investment for the town to put somewhere, you put it in a lockbox, you put it up high where nobody can tear it off, and a designated person, you get a real-time image at two in the morning when somebody's out there tearing the fence down on the playground. I think they ought to put, the county ought to put them at the dumpster sites too, because that's a different subject, but same deal, stuff's all tore down. Stuff's all tore down and the money spent on the camera, not, not that much. I mean, I, I, I will tell you, you could go to Costco and get one for under $300 to have like eight cameras with it, and it'll run on a hard drive.
Am I hearing that you authorized, you're making a motion to authorize?
About the $300?
I'd say up to 500.
I'd say up to 500. Or you get a good.
Do we have to wait for business?
No, that's a point.
Anyway, thank y'all for any help you could give us, and if you get really bored, just come to our house, there's plenty of action right after one, all of that.
Believe me, I've got, I've got a neighbor like that too.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Alright, yeah, I just want to talk about, uh, you're talking about, it's coming springtime now, and, and, and the grass cutting and the bad houses. And right as you turn on Councilman Rob, it's free, alright? There's a house right now with grass about two, two and a half feet tall, alright? Nobody's in the house. If we don't address these issues now.
The trailer house.
Can I tell you about that?
Sure.
Uh, that's the trailer house, that we just got a judgment on for non-haven for the last four years or five years.
More than $1,520.
Where we cut the grass and build them and then paved it.
Okay.
Um, and I was going, as part of my report tonight was to mention that, uh, that same property needs to cut again.
Exactly.
So we're aware, we're getting ready to cut it, he won't do it, and, uh, we didn't show it. We did get the judgment, and Tess and I talked about, what do we have to do, we gotta find out where he's working, and we're gonna start garnishing his wages.
Well, they won't even put that house for sale, will they?
No.
He's been, he had been contacted numerous towns, I think, and his brother, his brother named Gary.
Yeah.
He, uh, he actually put the roof on that shed, like that, because there's one and everything inside of it. So, and Gary went in and cut the shrub, the bushes down.
Again, part of my report tonight was, 160 grass lovers that we gave to set it out. Uh, I'd say half of them have been cut, half of them. Uh, some of them were cut and now they need cut again. So it's just a constant issue that we have, and we get to them just as quick as we can and cut them and build them. And I'm going, if somebody's living there, I, I, it doesn't matter to me whether it's a tenant or not, or they own the house. If they don't pay when we cut it, we're gonna cut the services off until they pay. And Tess is right, the over here shaking, I'll deal, we'll deal with the legal part of it later. Because we've got to hit them in the pocketbook and make them pay. Otherwise, this trailer guy was getting his yard cut, basically $150 a month during the summer. That's what we were charging him, we were cutting it once a month for 150. And he can't get somebody to cut it for that, so he wasn't worried about it. He's gonna worry about it now, because it's not 150 anymore. And that's the only way I'm gonna do it, so we're very much aware of it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
No, you guys acted so fast, I didn't have to say what I wanted to say, good for you, Wendy.
Well, then, ma'am, we move to the consent calendar. Matters on the consent calendar considered routine would be approved by one motion. Any item can be removed from the calendar at the request of a member of council, may be voted on separately. You have a minute of the town council meeting held on April, April 2019, you have the bill sheet and the additions which we just received. Do I have a motion? So, move it. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by like seven. We're gonna move to the town manager's report. Uh, I wanna start out on a good note, this is getting to be a habit and it's a good habit, I don't mind doing it every year. Water plant received a golden award again.
Awesome.
For 2018, and basically what it says is, congratulations, the Dean Department of Health Officer Drinking Water is pleased to present town approved water treatment plant with a gold award, 2018 water treatment plant performance award for excellence in clarification, filtration and backwash. The gold award is major recognition of your efforts to achieve filtration performance criteria for 2018. So, I don't know, it's two years in a row, and then three out of the last four, I think.
Tell them, tell them we signed it. Don't tell me you love it.
Well, this is signed, uh, sharing the not.
No relation.
No relation, anyway. Again, as always, I'm proud of, of what we do. I know everybody have always, you're not gonna be happy with everything, but it's healthy, it's not gonna hurt you, uh, it's safe to drink. And in my opinion, it's just as good as any around here. Wild farm.
Yes, sir. Yes, I drink it all the time.
Oh, I'd like being sure I've been drinking my whole life, I just pick it in people's houses.
I do too now, I couldn't, I couldn't say that.
We had some problems, we had some problems in the past, but I feel like it's a thing to do. I've already talked about the grass violation laws, if there's anything else, you know, that I wanted to mention. So, again, it's just an ongoing problem and it's something we're gonna have to deal with, and we have to, the things that the town has to do, for the town, has to come first. And our own grass cutting, which is, is pretty enormous. Spend two days cutting over the cemetery, you'll see what I'm talking about. All that weed eating and everything is unbelievable. We'll just have to keep fighting about it, that's all I'm doing.
Well, a lot of them guys, after they get off their trash truck, taking care of your trash, they go straight to cutting grass, the rest is happening.
They're trying to keep up. Maybe. So, uh, and as you know, uh, council submitted a request of proposals for capital improvement plan for the town. I'll read this, I'll skip me a thing. This request was sent to three firms and was answered by all three. Request was sent to Davenport Company, Hurt and Profit, which are our consultant engineers, and VML VACO. There were essentially two phases to the request. Phase one dealt with doing all, all inventory, a cost analysis on all town capital assets. And phase two would be taking this information and forming a plan on how the town can finance the needs in the future. I'm just giving you a summary, I've got copies for y'all to take. Davenport submitted an RFP, if you think about it, makes sense, only on phase two. They're more into the financial side of it, and they said, once you have phase one completed, then they would, they would conduct phase two. The cost submitted for their portion would be not to exceed $15,000. Hurt and Profit responded with a bid on phase one only, which makes sense, the engineers and the consultants. VML VACO submitted a bid for both phase one and two. You'll see that Hurt and Profit estimated a high of $69,800 to do the study. They also included an alternative estimate, which would be considerably less work for them and considerably more work for us, $24,380. VML VACO based their estimate on the town doing most of the work and providing information and then evaluating, coming up with the CIP. Their estimate was $23,500. So I'll hand these out now. I've got Davenport, I've got copies for everybody, and I've got copies from Hurt and Profit, but I only got two copies from VML, so I'm gonna keep these uptown. And y'all can come by if you want to look at them. They're essentially saying the same thing, the process. Hurt and Profit said probably a year to do this, and they're basing it on meetings and hours and hourly rates. That's where their cost is coming in. I have time to look at them. I've got another one pinned out here for y'all, you can pick these up now if you want to. We've been talking about getting the feeling asset a couple times for town, town profit, less than town profit. Tiffany put this together, and she's highlighted the areas in here, if you see hollows, these are property, they're not property, but they're, I'll say, they're easel properties. We've got buildings on, like.
These are probably.
Y'all can pick that up for a minute. Yeah. I think. Yes. That's my question. Any questions for the town manager, or council?
You want to receive the, uh, the greetings?
Yeah.
I'll be at number four. Like we said, to the three. We're looking.
Alright, questions from council for the town manager, we go to the town attorney's report.
Yes, thank you. Um, as the town manager referenced earlier, um, we did just obtain a judgment on the trailer house. And so we're trying to, trailer house property, so we're trying to find a way to collect that. Um, one option that we've discussed is recording the judgment at the courthouse as a lien on the property. And then if we want, we can sell it that way, depending on what else is attached to the property. And then the other thing we can do is find out where he works and start to garnish his wages too, now that we do have that judgment against him. So, um, we are working on that. Um, in response to the council member's question in the booklet, specifically regarding the Crystal Lake issue and making sure that we have ensured the instructions. What I have pulled, and I have some copies available for you all if you all want to see it, but when I did my research, basically what the state authorities had come up with was suggesting a source water plan where you get a group of people together that are invested in the property, kind of like a committee, with different stakeholders to come up with exactly what needs to be done to secure the, um, source water protection. And so one of those, the first step really is coming up with a local advisory committee to evaluate what are the risks and then developing what are the site, site-specific recommendations to mitigate the risk and things like that. And so my advice is to pursue this, what we need to do first is come up with a local advisory committee of different people, probably some people from the counties, since that's where Crystal Lake is, and then some people from the town too. But I printed off some additional copies, if anybody would like a copy of that.
Yeah. Um, regarding, um, I don't, I didn't print off enough copies for everybody, but certainly if you all want a copy of it, mail it, email it to me. I've got a copy and that's all as well.
Yeah, I'll just get a copy of that.
So, yeah, so what that just does is the specific, you know, steps that we can take forward to ensure that. Um, also regarding the renegotiating with the internet and things like that, I have been working on that as well. I've talked to some attorneys that have specific knowledge in that area, and so I'm working contact, on contacting those people um, to see what we need to do to move forward with it.
Anything else?
Uh.
Just the standard stuff, so that's all, thank you.
Alright, thank you, ma'am.
Did you say there was some tax liens against the trailer property?
No, I didn't say that, no.
Do you know if there is?
Uh, we can look and see if there is, all we have to do is check with the treasurer's office, but, you know, we wouldn't need to do that before we sold it, you know, at a judicial sale or anything like that, because tax liens are priority over judgments, but...
Did you do a title search on that one property we were talking about?
Yes, I did.
Did we talk about that, or?
Sure, that's not a problem, the, what?
That's the house right over here, correct?
No, what was it called, what do you all call it?
Theater or something?
Yes, the theater property.
Oh, B and M.
B and M.
B and M.
Yes, yes. So, we had talked about that last time, there are some, it is owned by the person and not by the bank.
That's what y'all thought, right?
I was hopeful that it would be owned by the bank, but unfortunately, it's not, it's owned by the person, so it is encumbered by some liens on the property, and so, given that that is, my advice is, and I had talked to Wade about this too, would be the best thing to do to pursue it is going to be going after the person in general district court, instead of trying to enforce it on the property, because there's so many liens and things like that. So, Wade had told me to go forward on that.
Yeah, my conversation with the bank, because the bank does have a mortgage against it, but they've got mortgage insurance beating, and probably what's gonna happen is, mortgage insurance company comes in and evaluates, which they've done, and they'll either suggest fixing it, repairing it, or pay off the loan, and they're gonna say, pay off the loan, the bank's out of it. And so, we're gonna be looking at it. I hate saying it, it's gonna get dumped on us.
Once the mortgage insurance pays off the loan, then who owns it? The individual?
Well, let me, if, 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 uh, someone sat down and talked to the owner, and advised him that might be in his best interest to sign it over to the bank.
That's all we know, the bank doesn't want it, they don't want it.
And he don't want it either, because he had heard it, the local bank, the local bank managed to tell me flat out.
I wouldn't want it either.
The money, the money.
Well, I understand that they don't want it, but if he.
To fix it.
If he just.
Enormous.
Walks away from it.
The bank, it's just like, if I want, if I get my car repossessed, I want, I've given it back to the bank, the bank's gonna sell it, and then I'm still gonna end up with what I owe on it, one way or the other, so the bank doesn't wanna be in the property business.
Bottom line is, it's private property.
It's not our problem, yet.
Well, I mean, it is our problem, and it continues to be our problem, it'll just be a bigger problem.
The owner did tell me there were some people interested.
Oh.
Really?
See, we were trying to get this engineering report, because it'd been, it'd been some, I don't know what high word, but was the ninety-some thousand dollars that we all heard to make the building safe again, period, or was that to fix everything? And so, we.
It's just the awning.
Alright, it's just, just to make it safe again, but I was told we cannot have that engineering report, because it's a compliance issue with the bank, until it's paid off, and then they might be able to give a copy of it.
Doesn't hold us to fix an awning to make it safe, seems, well, absurd.
Bottom line, we can't do anything better right now, right?
Exactly, so let's move on.
Well, well, I have one question about this. Say the awning just is taken back, or is it built into the structure?
I don't know.
Not into the structure.
That, that in itself is, is a problem.
Well, see, the owner actually told me that at one time, there was not a hole in the middle, the awning was supported by the chains on it, and they said it's really not an issue, or is the chain's holding the awning?
But the building inspector says otherwise.
The building inspector says otherwise, but he, he said if he could produce a picture where that post was not in there, which is very possible.
There is. There's a lady walking under it, right there.
I mean, we've had the same questions here, if it's just a matter of taking the awning down, and making it safe, the owner wants it safe to walk under, and the building's saying, then that's one time. You know, if, what the building inspector's saying is that that's not all there is to it, it was connected to Bean's on the side of the building, he thinks the whole building is not safe. So, that's why we needed a new engineering report, you know, so can we see what it says?
We need a second opinion?
Right, exactly, can we ask others?
That's what they already got, that's what, the engineers came in, we four lands, look at it?
But that was the bank's insurance company.
Is there another building inspector that we can get to look at it, besides? I mean, I mean, it's too early now, but, because it's not our problem yet.
Alright, it's not a problem, if we're gonna do that. Alright, with that in mind, everything is in the, is pretty much informational in the mayor's reports, in your agenda. I would point out, a public safety warning, there was a woman that was scammed on three thousand dollars last week. Our officers were able to track down the culprit fairly quickly, but he was offering, riding around offering to upgrade her asphalt, and came in and sprayed some oil, and took her money, and went right to the bank and cashed it, and was huffed down the road before we were able to track him down. We want everyone to know that if you are, if itinerant peddlers, people who don't have a storefront, are required to have a license to operate in the town approved, and if they do not have a license, do not do business with them, because they may be scammers, or at least not paying their taxes. And we want everyone to have, be treated fairly, and if they're doing business in the town approved, they have to pay a business tax like everybody else that works here. There were some questions from council, one of those has since been updated in the continuing business. I want to amend one piece in the paragraph E. Asset Crew is the only department at the present time with any paid firefighters, that should've said without any paid firefighters. Tornado sirens, during the recent spate of tornadoes, an inquiry was made as to how we would provide warning if tornadoes were impending outside the town approved. I made a few phone calls, we do not have a separate tornado siren. Blackstone Dallas, it's initiated from the dispatcher's office, central dispatching. I called up there, they said they could initiate a normal fire siren as the warning, and what they would do is then put a blast out over the, over the EMS system to let firefighters know it was a tornado and not a fire. So, they did that. I don't know if we'd be interested in investing in a separate tornado siren, I lay it out there for your thought, we don't have to discuss it tonight, just put it in your back pocket, we can bring it up again, and I'm sure we'll have a problem.
How many tornadoes have you had in the?
Well, we've actually, we've had, yeah, a couple, a couple years. And then, of course, the big management crew homecoming, on May eighteenth, the parade kicks off at noon, I think, I've got the timeline somewhere.
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock.
But we also have part of homecoming on Friday night, too, for family night.
Okay, and that's gonna be, that Hooper Park is going on?
Starting at, I think it's five o'clock, and food will be available, but you have to pay for that.
Okay, and events kick off Saturday at the community center, and then shifts the, shifts the main street about ten o'clock, I guess, is that, well, it must've been, it will be up by nine, I don't think, right?
You speak at twelve.
I speak at twelve.
That's weird, oh, you're on the twelve.
Wanna write it down again, though? Alright, good. What else? Oh, one other item, on the amendments, Mr. Miskin had two proposals, I missed one of them, it's in your packet, and the second one would be a grocery co-op, we'll come to that. Alright, with that in mind, if there's no questions, we'll move on to committee reports. Final statement.
Well, we did come up with a proposed budget. I wanted to say to Mrs. Pettis, we did add in a thousand dollars, or I think, we added in two, work on the social media communications, please.
Personnel committee, have a report?
No report.
Community development.
All I gotta say, I did have three neighbors of one resident come to me at work complaining about a property, I did speak with Wade about it. Wade sent a certified letter, and there was action. I mean, it's slow action, but it's action, so that could, very will work, yeah, so, and the people came and said, thank us very much for doing something about it.
That's it, alright, do you have yours?
Uh, no, you were asking about the airport and the chicken festival replacement. I've been doing a lot of thinking, I haven't got with the committee members yet, but in my opinion, the airport would not be a good location, because the lack of shade covering awning, lack of water, lack of electricity. I have heard some kickback from a couple of the people who use the airport, that they don't want it happening there, interfere with airport activity. I think possibly a better location could be, and we've run into a few of the same issues, but at least we would have some electrical there, Hagburg or Veterans Memorial Park.
Crew Veterans Memorial.
Crew Veterans Memorial Park, and my idea is possibly to put a little more planning into it, and possibly not do it in September, but maybe associate it around the same time as the homecoming. Because then you have people already coming to town, a lot of, you know, folks that used to live here, and my idea was to have, and I have a question about that, because I know they're signing the alcoholic beverage at, at that park, could we do like a beer truck, sell tickets like they did at the concert series, and then have food trucks, and people just have food available, and have the local bands, for instance, Southbound, Porch Gliders, Dawtons.
I ran into Mr. Worsing on Saturday, he's got seventeen acres, he will allow the town crew to use provided, the funding goes to the fire department or volunteer organizations, so that might be another option.
Across the street from Hooper?
Yes. Follow-up exit.
Oh, very good. Very welcome.
Alright.
With the symbols in there, too.
So, the bottom line is, you want to kick it to next year.
Bottom line is, I don't think.
I think we're pretty ready, you're gonna have to do that anyway.
Yeah.
Alright.
It's a lot to get prepared for, if you even had to airport.
Alright, alright, good, well, let me, I'll get with you on something else, another concept that was floated, not, not by you.
Gotcha.
Alright, with that in mind, we move to continuing business. Community garden, on eight, Mary Terry Abson, the guy who made the grant, community garden was not approved, or?
Roll back one more thing. I was approached by a couple of fire department members, I don't know if they got with you yet, or Wade, Wade or not, but there was a dumpster fire at a construction site on Nelson Street, and the fire hydrant spit out just mud, lots of it. They ended up having to hook up a hose to the hydrant, a straight hydrant, to put it out, since it wasn't anything real big, didn't put it through the tanker, because that would clog up their tanker, but we do need to maybe see where they're at, with maybe flushing some of these hydrants, or testing some.
They're gonna all be like that with the first, all of them, they've got a well, and as it sits on, that's what happens, so the first crack, all of them.
Because I know, at one point, they would flush them.
Yeah, we flush them, we do twice a year.
Yeah.
And the last time we did it was quicker flushes, we never had, just didn't take any time, and they run them, they flush them, and then they clear up, and then they move on, down.
Gotcha, okay.
So, then, the community garden, Terry Abson called me on May the eighth, and she said that their grant did not get approved. I told her the land behind the BMW would be available to her if she can find somebody that wants to put, do a community garden. I told the town approved that I have the manpower and the expertise to do it, but that they are more than willing to, you know, if she's got volunteers and she wants to corral, it is available to her. Item B is landlord tenant education approved to action, and I had talked, since we've had our initial discussions on this, we don't want to reinvent the wheel, frankly, we have Virginia Landlord Tenant Act that governs landlord and tenant relations. I had some lengthy discussions with Larry Williamson, who I'm representing, you know, that, that side of the fence, and basically, I proposed that we go the education route, I think the education route is going to be the best initial alternative, from a time perspective and a money perspective, because we do not have the manpower nor the mechanism in place to enforce Virginia Landlord Tenant Act. I think what we need to do is make people aware of it, and the tenants have to be aware of it, but there's also legal aid, and what I'm proposing is that we put verbiage that you see in paragraph B, we can stick this on water bills, and we can also post it, and we can make it available to people, because they have to know how to get help. I would also recommend that we develop a landlord register where we can identify who owns what, and then when we have problems, we can engage and keep a dialogue going with landlords and renters to get, take care of the problems. I would use a hundred, hundred and some odd grass cutting, about how many were renters? Would you estimate, it'd be hard to say. Okay, so, but a lot of.
Can we get the link put on our website, so that.
Yes.
To the community, people can come to the town website, just click on the link.
Yeah.
For the tenants of the town.
We could put the link on the chamber website, too.
Yeah, too, alright. So, I mean, it could be, it's out there anyway, but it's, part of our job is education first, and that will help with the enforcement aspect of it. In talking to Mr. Williamson, he, he made it very clear that a lot of landlords don't know their responsibilities, so they too need to be made aware of, of what's in the law, and I think by driving people to the law, they have a vested interest in that they're gonna need. I don't know that we need to bug off, we can just, I could probably just direct these actions unless you wanna vote on it, but.
Did, did you guys look at the Blackstone plan?
I did, I did, it's very lengthy, but my question is how to enforce it, and I even had to get down and talk to them.
What, what they're doing is when a property comes vacant, that's when they go by an inspector, and then they have thirty to sixty days, however long it takes, to repair whatever issue that there is, and then they get signed off on it.
Have they started that process yet?
They've already started it.
And what's the feedback, have, have they inspected many?
They were inspected, the last time I talked to them, they inspected two, both had small issues, and both issues were fixed, and actually, it was Carolyn Davis's that was first on the.
Was Dean doing that?
Dean is doing them, because Dean is the county inspector, so he would do any of them that we have.
Tessie, you got any input on that from Blackstone's point? Has it been going okay, I mean, and they were two?
I'm not, I don't know the specific question of has it been going okay, I really don't know that part of it, but do you know that, you know, the town is working with Dean to inspect them and things like that, and so.
Can you call Mr. Van Orbeck and find out what it's costing them to do, I want to?
Sure.
That would be interesting.
Mayor, that your proposal, I really like number three, I would ask, though, why are we limiting it to persons possessing two or more mouths?
Uh, because that's what the law says, if you have two or more rentals, you're a landlord. And you can have one rental and not be considered, fall under the Virginia landlord, renter that attempt this act here.
Okay, and I guess that might speak to my next question, rather than having a landlord register, having a property register of rental properties, so.
Yeah, kind of, it just, yeah, that same thing, I've just verbalized it differently,
Okay, so it would be a, a listing of what property is rental?
Yeah, not just the landlord, but what properties are.
Perfect.
Any other questions? Alright, with that in mind, unless you wanna vote on it, I'll just move off as an action item. Good, with that in mind, new business, we have emergency services proposal from Mr. Miskin, do you wish to address it?
Please, um, thank you, Mayor, has everyone had a chance? Please. Um, thank you, Mayor. Uh, has everyone had a chance to read the proposal in
Yes.
your packets?
Yeah.
Are there any questions or thoughts, comments, concerns, moments, run, tries? Does everyone understand what it's, uh, what it's basically saying?
I have some thoughts.
Okay.
And concern. Well, first of all, I like it. And I want to lodge your, your attitude. Uh, I talked to Val Wilson though, and this is a problem all across Southside Virginia. And I, really what I'd like to do is elevate this to the state level, to V M L. I would like to do, if you could, if you, as does everybody else too. From a, from a new perspective, I don't know that the town crew can take this on because at some point you're gonna, you're gonna get maxed out. So you have to have a budget plan as to who you provide to, how many people you provide to number one. Number two, we don't have anything like this for our employees. So that might be, you know, a different issue altogether. However, I see it as a great incentive. And I, I think your proposal really ought to be endorsed by this council to the V M L and bring it up into the Virginia General Assembly. Because I think the Virginia General Assembly has the ability to allocate some of their grant monies through, or their monies through, uh, the Southside Virginia Community College system at least, uh, to set aside money to at least alleviate, uh, some of the funding issues.
So, speaking to that, I actually just had a conversation today with the, um, woman at Newark Valley Community College. She runs the program. Uh, and she was telling me, um, so of course, yeah, the, the numbers are a bit off. Um, well, when I was looking at the total numbers of what it would cost with counties they were to take this on, um, those numbers are a little bit off because what they do is they provide this sort of service to, or this, uh, this offering to any graduate high school student who wants to go to a community college. They have to provide Indiana's community service to any, and in the end they look at at least generally, um, uh, point people in a, in specific directions. With that, um, of the, so she was telling me that, uh, five years ago was the first time they did it. Giles County had sixty, um, students, uh, apply for the program. Um, and all sixty of them had to, um, fill out the PAFSA. So A, it's a, it's a huge benefit because a lot of these students don't actually fill out the PAFSA, uh, to begin with. Uh, and when they don't fill out the PAFSA, they don't realize that they're eligible for financial aid. So of the sixty, twenty of them found out that they were eligible for financial aid at that, uh, and, and didn't have to pay nothing. Um, another, uh, twenty were eligible for some financial aid and the other twenty, um, were, uh, not eligible for any aid. So this was really directed at those. So this program that there, um, uh, in Newark Valley is, uh, what they call a last dollar program. So this only funds what financial aid doesn't already cover. Uh, so that's one thing in terms of, of funding. Um, but secondly, this is more of a smaller pilot program. Um, there are sources of funding that we're a little late for this year. Um, but again, I think with the way this works out, um, it wouldn't be until next year anyway. So we could potentially, there's an education scholarship grant through the Tabak Commission, uh, which would provide, um, basically all the, all the funding that we need for this. Uh, so I can take this and look into it a little bit more, uh, make some phone calls, um, if council wants me to, and start to, uh, engage with the, uh, stakeholders to see if this would be something they'd be interested in. Um, the community college would probably have to take on some of the administrative, um, heard it from their end. Um, but ultimately, see where that work goes.
One of the challenges with the volunteer hours, uh, particularly with police or fire departments, that they need something like seventy-four hours before they're being, you know.
Yeah, that's what, that's what people don't realize.
Yeah.
Is, is, a lot of this community service will be just them going to class on top of their already college responsibilities to able to be able to even get on the fire apparatus.
Right. So the, uh, the design of this program would be the first, so rather than eighty hours, like, oh, I, I put in there, I, I just threw out a number, a hundred hours, community service. Um, so the first year would probably be, you know, mostly going to class and everything else, but that would be while they're still in high school. And, uh, once they complete that, then they're eligible for, um, free tuition for, um, no, I'm sorry, uh, covered tuition for, uh, for the community college.
What I would say too, and, and I know we talked about looking into it a little bit more. I, and I know in your proposal, you said about reallocating funds. Now, me personally, I'm not a big reallocation of funds kinda guy. I would have rather seen it delivered to us earlier or this be a plan to put in with the next budget year so we can budget towards it. Um, and I know we got money sitting in the derelict building fund, but until this thing is resolved with that, we might need that derelict building fund. Um, more than we think right now. I don't think it's, I, I think it's a good idea to pursue, but I'm like, you know, it's not something we're gonna get done.
No.
Right, you know. I think it's a great plan.
Yeah. It, it looks good. I mean, it's, their biggest, the biggest issue with the, like, for say the fire department is, is they don't have, people don't volunteer as much anymore. They want, if they do anything, the young people are sitting at home in front of a video game. And then if they're not sitting at home in front of the video game, you know, they're not going to go volunteer hours in classes to get on the fire truck anymore. You used to, that was what you did. You went and you volunteered, you, you know, but people wanted to aspire to be a firefighter and that's what a majority of their guys have done. And they still have a few, but a majority of the cost, especially during the day, they have a call during the day. You've got Val, Charles, Howard Jenkins. Everybody you've got is generally gray-headed.
They have.
But it's always, it now, when I was, it was always like that when I was on. So that's no, that's, that's not changed. What people don't realize with these volunteer organizations is all of them, they're just like second jobs, but they're unpaid.
Yeah. I mean, that takes them a lot of time.
And to those volunteer organizations, and I can say this, and my granddaddy always said this, and he was a charter member of the rescue squad up here. Volunteer organizations can't, can't always forget that they're volunteers. Because they, they have a set of guidelines and rules to where they want you there as much as they can. And if you can't make it, they can't use you, in their opinion. Where in my opinion, it's, if I'm available and I'm trained, you take what you get. But this is not the world we live in anymore, so, you know.
Correct.
I, I get it. I'd say. Come down, if we could take it to V M L, I'd be a V M L.
Okay, uh, also.
We'll work for towns, or towns less than five thousand and the counties less than, I don't know, whatever size country it is. Cause it's really, it's rural areas that need, that's, the urban areas have paid people.
Perfect. So do you wanna go both routes? First tweaking for V M L and second engaging the stakeholders, getting their ideas and potentially looking at this.
You'd be amazed to get state money involved.
Tabac money, right.
Alright.
Thank you for your welcome.
Yes, thank you.
Good job, Ma.
Item B, grocery co-op, Councilor Miskavick.
Okay, everyone has a proposal in their packet. Did everyone have any opportunity to read that?
I did.
Any comments, questions, thoughts, concerns, comments, remarks, requests?
Stakeholders, is that just a list that you compiled?
Just a list that I, uh, came up with.
Do we think will be stakeholders?
Uh, thank you.
Have you talked to A and J produce?
Not yet.
What about yours?
Uh, haven't talked to anyone.
Okay.
Wait a minute, you gonna talk to current businesses about putting up a grocery store in town?
Well, um, one, uh, again, this would be something for the, um, it can be just to decide, but one potential option would be to open up a co-op where everyone can sell in one, under one roof. Food in there.
Correct.
Like a farmer's market.
Sort of, right, right.
Sort of general.
Uh, food hub or a, so, I mean, co-op may not, but that co-op is one business model.
Food hub would be very.
Food hub, right, something like that. I mean, it's, there, there's a lot out there. And my thought is we just need to look at something like this because again, like we were saying before, it's about, it's gotta be about, um, the ground up rather than trying to attract people who are, aren't gonna come because we're saturated.
We could offer fun.
Um, that's another thing for the, uh, for the committee to decide. This is just a proposal to establish committee to start looking at the, um, ideas.
What is a pleasure at council?
You've got two grocery experts here. What do you all think?
My personal thoughts?
Well, your professional thoughts, yeah.
Uh, my professional thought is, um, I worked at Star Valley for thirteen years. Okay. Until I went to Crete Station.
But you were manager there.
I was the manager there. I was assistant manager. Uh, majority of the people, um, that I know in crew, I never saw set foot in Star Valley. And, um, they would go to Chesterfield, to Farmville, to wherever else. They weren't coming in Star Valley. Um, part of the reason is because of our landlord and he wouldn't make any improvements. We had leaky roof. We had a smelly building because of the leaky roof and the mold and everything else. But the other reason is because, and, and don't get me wrong, I'd love to see a grocery store in Crewe. Love it. But professionally, I don't think Crewe will support one. I don't think the town can support one. There's not enough population here to support a grocery store. Um, we lost our chance with Food Line because they were gonna build here before they went to, um.
They'd be on Victoria.
Victoria. They were gonna build here.
That was gonna be my, that was gonna be my store.
But the landlord, right when the.
Who won that?
You raised it.
The right, when they were fixing to sign the papers, decided, oh, I'm gonna get some more money out of you. And then they said, well, no, you're not. We're gonna build in Victoria.
Do you know that?
I know that as a fact.
Alright, that's a personality.
That's a fact. Um, so I think we missed our chance with that cause you've got a Food Line in Farmville, you've got a Food Line in Victoria, you've got a Food Line in Blackstone. It, my heart breaks for.
We're in their coverage area.
For the, the elderly people who can't drive very far and the people who don't have vehicles, my heart breaks for them. But I don't think financially you can get a grocery store in this town and make any money at all to Sabat. I mean, I think the, if we could get AJs to, in a better building and to expand, that's our best bet. You know, if we could get them in a suitable building where they could expand, something like that would be our best bet. Or something that they've got in Cambridge, good shoppers value, I believe. A lot of people from the area go to shoppers value. But if you could get AJs in a larger building, but which there's a lack of in Crewe right now, um.
And with a larger building comes.
Bigger overhead.
Bigger overhead.
Yeah.
More employees.
Yeah.
You know, to kind of piggyback on what Wendy said, I spent twenty years with Food Line, Farmers Food, and I started off in that store. And, you know, when it was in good shape. Back in its heyday, before there was a Food Line in Amelia and Blackstone, first of the month, first two weeks of the month, it did a hundred and eighty thousand miles a week in sales and wouldn't drop below one thirty towards the end. When the store was still in good shape, and I was assistant manager a few years later, and it was Amelia and Blackstone, it was one thirty at the first of the month and ninety to a hundred if we were lucky. So Food Line took, when the store was in that good a shape, that much business from Crewe. And the reason it took it is, is because no independent grocery, it's Sabat's got Rich Foods buying power behind it. So they can give you cost. That's the key to the business. I couldn't open one. I could open one tomorrow, but I could not give you any better prices than AJ gives you right now. Because I don't have the buying power of a Food Line or Aldi's or, uh, you know, we wouldn't be able to support a Kroger unless we drew people from Blackstone everywhere. Cause they, they're, they're models made, they're made for a higher volume, like Publix is made for a higher volume. Not to say that we, I just don't, the people of Crewe would have to buy in. It's different to say you want a grocery store, but you have to spend your money there.
Exactly. And, but then that's why I'm looking more towards the grocery co-op model. Because it would create that, uh, that buying. So, so what, some of the issues that you two are bringing up are because it's a single owner.
Yes.
Um, if this was a situation where multiple owners were on the same roof to split the overhead costs? Or if there was some sort of a funding model where the business of the, uh, the community would buy into it as well? Um, that could also open the doors for additional, uh, funding, additional, uh, external funding as well.
I've got a question.
Can you talk to Super back?
I've, I've got a question. Has anybody approached Dollar General about their Dollar General grocery?
Well, that, that's an interesting thing because, uh, Bobby, you know all about this. They had, they had looked into that at one time when they, when they put the order.
Yeah.
And if I'm not mistaken, they opted out of it because they didn't think.
Nobody, yeah, nobody probably does better research
They know they're.
than Dollar General. That's why they can put one in Rice and it makes money. Or you can go down, uh, in, what is it, between Fork Union and Dillon? And here's a Dollar General right in the middle of nowhere making money. And they do that great of research because they're not gonna build something that's not gonna make it. And they chose not to give us, this is when we didn't have a grocery store at all, uh, uh, Dollar General marketplace.
Yeah.
So there had to be, I don't know the inside working, but there had to be something to it for them not to do it here after the one in Clarksville had been so successful.
Yeah. And, and then the one, the Food Line they put in Victoria didn't perform as they had expected. That's why they wouldn't come back and do anything.
So what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing, you're, from your professional background, basically this, we may not take less for a while.
Well, if we put a whole lot of money into it, we can still do some of the, the, we can do the legwork. I wouldn't put, you know, because, just because we two say, you know, that's our professional opinion.
Well, what I'd like to do.
Doesn't mean that.
Well, what I'd like to do.
Buy a pile, buy a pile.
You guys have got, what, forty years experience between you and actually probably closer to fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Forty, no.
Yeah.
Well, put you two on committee with Councilor Miskavick and you guys hand out it and, uh.
Yeah, I mean, what you've got is a great idea. I mean, it, it's just.
I think the first thing we gotta do is talk to the stake, stakeholders.
Yeah.
Yeah, we looked at it one time, um, in a British council, when Henry was the mayor, we talked about it and.
Y'all did, y'all did a flyer on that too, trying to go through the community to find out, well, you know, how, but you didn't have that good of success on people responding to.
Yeah, but we didn't have AJs really then either and, and it, you know, it's not like it is now.
No, 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 you had to meet y'all, but you had to.
Yeah, he.
If, if we had a good building to put AJs in, I mean, where they could expand and add like a, a little more of a dairy department and stuff like that.
Parking.
I mean, and parking, parking.
If, if they want to.
If they want.
Yeah, if they would want to, yeah.
Yes. Alright, with that in mind, Mr. Doctor Missfall, Mr. Miskavick are pointing to a grocery co-op committee to discuss a course of action, uh, at the cost of the town at the current time. Alright, with that in mind, uh, is there any other new business?
I have another piece of new business, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Careful with me.
You make the check, Alan.
Believe so. There we go. Um, oh, I'm not sure why that's so small.
Looks like.
It ain't go cool.
No.
That is, okay, so, um, a couple of months ago, this may not, okay, there we go.
Oh, yeah.
The, um, town manager approached me and asked me if we can find someone to help us with our cemetery maps. Because we were using our maps from the late nineteen thirties and writing
Right.
um, ads, people, what map. So I, uh, reached out to a cartographer at Virginia Tech, um, who agreed to help us with this project, basically using this. Basically using this, uh, it's called ArcGIS system to, um, digitize our plots. This is just a, uh, just a quick draft of some of what, uh, he's done so far. So basically, these are the, uh, the plots as they're listed on the, uh, on the maps. Um, and the plan is to be able to click on any one of those and, well, uh, a box will pop up a little bit bigger than that and, uh, and we'll be able to, uh, input information, who owns the plot, who's in there, uh, for each one of these. And, uh, it should be an easy process such that every quarter or every half year or so, uh, the town staff can go in and update everything, uh, for, for plots that we sold, uh, and such. Are there any thoughts, questions, comments, concerns about this? We may even be able to put this link on the, uh, on the website.
Yeah, that looks, I mean, that's a great job on that.
I'll show you, I'll show you one that I've got.
Wayne, I'd like to hear your comment.
Can these be numbered?
Uh, yeah, probably. Any, uh, the boxes themselves or... Okay, so, so before you click on that, do you want them numbered? Okay.
Yeah.
I heard the D part. I see though, they hadn't done any research on the...
That way if you number them when you sell them, then you can now attach it.
See, Bobby, I'll show you where yours can be right now.
Let's see if I can explain this. The old section, it's really not a problem. Other than it's old and very seldom, but occasionally somebody will come in looking for somebody. So if we have, have it numbered and we know who's in there, then that would be extremely...
You know who's in there now, don't you, with all the mapping that Ray did?
No.
Sure you, he does, he does this every day of his life.
We don't.
He brings it to town hall.
Susan, I deal with it when I go over there. There's a name on there, but the people that are buried there are not the same name. Proceed. I mean, it just aren't.
So, uh, another thing that, um, he said that we can do is for, say, uh, Lottie Moon's grave, he can, uh, highlight those and make them, so I'm assuming they put numbers on each one too. Um, but highlight them and make it, so if it is on our website and people come here to go see Lottie Moon's grave, they can look that up, uh...
Can, can they further break them down, uh, grave, actual grave? Or with plots, probably.
Yeah, plots.
These, I believe, are the plots.
Yeah, all the plots.
So there's plots and then there's graves and then plots.
There's sixteen, sixteen gravesides in each plot.
Okay.
So if we can separate those, not, not just...
Eight, eight graves.
Eight graves.
Eight.
Eight graves.
Essentially, what he would like is if someone were to come in the town office and just know off the top of their head that they have a relative buried in section A, plot twenty-three. If I pull this map up, we would like for it to show...
Yes.
Plot number twenty-three. And then what Wade is saying, when we look at our maps now, the graves are numbered, you know, one, two, three, four, then five, six, seven, eight.
Right, so we can, uh, that may be a little bit more difficult to have each of the eight on, on here. Um, but we can, as I mentioned, click on and a box would open and we can see specifically in there. Could that be...
I think numbering the graves, when you click on the, the box, I think if they could be numbered in there, that's fine. But if we could have an identifying number on the plot when we're looking at the map, that would be here.
I know this is being worked on, so...
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So you could take the plot, like, like, like it starts up here on forty-nine, just go, just like, go like that, or you can go like this. Because see, when we, we surveyed this last, right over here, the, uh, the triangle on this side, Timbaland surveyed, surveyed that. He put eight grades per, per plot.
And they are already pre-numbered.
Okay, and they're, and they're already numbered on the, okay, perfect.
Yes.
But, but we can, we can probably renumber everything if you did it like, yeah, because the town only, only in control, we got some...
Would you want them renumbered? We, well, we can talk, uh, I don't wanna keep that around just... Perfect. My, uh, my only other things bringing up to council on this is, um, I, when I first left him the, uh, the maps, I asked him, you know, if he would charge us a fee. He said, uh, he's, really doesn't have an hourly rate, whatever we think is fair and the town can do. So it was more of a, this is fun for him, but having a little bit of money would be a good gesture as well.
Did he have, did he have a suggestion?
He didn't.
So if we gave him three hundred bucks, he might be happy.
Well, I wonder, I'm, I'm...
Let me, let me tell you how much a, a photographer usually charges, but, and no...
I watched him, right?
Right, right.
Is he a student who's doing this?
No, it's a faculty member.
Okay.
I have a question. When you click on that, uh, plot and that box comes up?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, would that box, like, say, have a list of the people that are in that plot?
Yes, it could.
Yeah, that's the A.
Yeah, I know, but like, you could click on a, a plot and then it would come out like...
Yeah, that's just a computer programming thing.
Yeah, like each number and like have a number beside and have the, the plots...
Well, you could, you could have...
The graves in the plot numbered.
Based on look the way we got them now, I mean, it's paperwork.
See, it'd be a whole lot simpler if you, if you hit everybody's name and after that border and then you click on that, it tells you what grade they're in.
Cross.
Cross reference.
Yeah, we can, we can absolutely figure that out with that search, such to.
We good?
Uh, I, so, um...
You gonna come up with a price tag or...
Unless we wanna throw out a number now, just...
Just clarification, you talking about paying there or wait till we see what we get?
Oh, wait till we see it, right.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
What, what amount do you think is fair on your, your...
I don't know yet.
Cartographers.
Are expensive.
Oh, okay.
And this is gonna be, I assume, very convenient for us.
Yeah, I mean, it's a great, it's a great program.
We've taken it for potential care too.
All right, any other new business? Any other new business? No other new business moving on personal privilege. Councilman Reed.
No, sir.
Councilman Bowen.
Uh, no, sir.
Councilman Duffy. Councilman Stetson.
Oh!
Nope.
I'm still new, guys. I'm learning. Could I make a motion for the cameras for the library?
Uh, you tell you pass that.
Oh!
Didn't we, didn't we talk about that before?
I mean, yeah, we can talk about it, but I, I...
I'm just, I'm just thinking about the logistics of it and where it's gonna be, you know, is it, does it need something in the library? Record it and how it would be monitored, you know, just general...
I think, I think the trail camera idea is easy.
Put that on that flagpole.
You can put it anywhere.
Put it on that flagpole.
Something you said would send the email.
It'll send, as soon as it takes a picture, you gotta pay a fee for it, you gotta buy a plan or AT&T or Verizon or whatever. But if somebody walks by, it sends a picture or video, however you gotta send.
Well, who's gonna get the police department?
Police department? Whoever's on duty or whatever have a duty...
I'm just saying, there's some questions.
Yeah, I mean, you, logistically, we'd have to figure it out, but I think it, I think it's worth it.
No, I think it is too.
Well, I, I can tell you how, 'cause I'll tell you how our security works at, like, our store. We have a, basically what it is, is a hard drive. You put all the cameras up, you'd have to have somebody basically install them. But nowadays, especially if they have Wi-Fi here, you can like, keep it, you can even keep it at the police department. And then it would record and it would record like ours stays for like a week. And it, then it moves and it goes over. So that way, if they have something that happens at, say, they have somebody beaten on a door at midnight, you take the camera that's facing that way and you, uh, do a search midnight on Monday, the thirteenth, and it pulls right up to it and then you can view it.
I know we had a system installed at the airport several years ago. And to me, it's been working.
Oh, wow.
What, what, what goes on at the airport?
Cameras are out all the time, lighting hits and, uh, this was going through, what was it, attempted company out of Victoria.
Oh, American Federal Security. That's who we...
My thought was more, not necessarily just about catching the person who did it a week later. My thought is more about catching the person doing it right now. Because...
Yeah, 'cause if you get a teammate when it's...
How many times, how many times we've prepared, prepared events, prepared the playground, whatever. You bust a couple of people doing it with real time, they're gonna stop doing it.
Can you send us a link, to, uh, send town manager a link to the trail cameras that you're talking about? The town manager's got authority to spend, what, five hundred without council's approval?
Six hundred.
Six hundred a week?
I mean, now, those cameras are in the five, six hundred, I mean, they're not cheap, but I think it's worth it and some... Well, they got all different, yeah, they got all different kinds of stuff.
Well, subscribe to it.
You have to pay a monthly, it's like cellphone bill to get to...
Linux, Linux cells are two. And, I mean, then night vision is excellent.
With this, I mean, that's just an idea, huh?
Yeah, I know that, but this, you get full cameras, full cameras are, um, four bucks, three hundred. That's what they do. And it is Wi-Fi.
Somebody would have to watch it.
All right, well, I think, I think, uh, let's, let's, uh, let, let...
Yeah, I think it's...
Get out of the town manager, let's come up with a plan and, and execute.
I want something that's gonna work.
If, if that's the same company you're using, maybe we'll tell them to talk to...
We use Sensomatic. Uh, we pay like twenty grand for ours, but that, that's, ours even has like outdoor stuff. I mean, I'm talking about this, this will work, I'm, I'm telling you that. Um, and it, it could be, if you would rather do like a monthly rate, I can get you hooked up with a monthly rate on the cameras, the biggest expense would be the cameras. But you get them from Costco and they just go right on the hard drive and you've got everything there.
You know, there's, the, the stuff is good and bad and, and I'll just say this, um, body cameras and, and things of that nature. We spend, and I say we, our police department, particularly our sergeant, he spent hours on his shift reviewing the tape. If he's sitting in the office reviewing tape, he's not on work.
Yeah, I, I get that.
Something like Aaron is talking about, we had something that could be given to whoever's on duty that would get that notification immediately. I think it's a great idea.
So we ask people to...
Well, send it to an email address or a text to you.
Yeah, 'cause if somebody tears up your fence three days ago and it, well, let's say they did three days ago and it doesn't get reported for three days and that's three days worth of tapes, somebody's gonna have to sit there and look through.
I mean, still waste hours and hours, well, not waste, but like you said, hours and hours reviewing bus tape and hallway tapes.
And, and I, I think it'd be real simple because, you know, we got a curfew in town, right? Well, he gets a picture that there's kids or somebody on the playground, he rides by there and he runs them off, they don't have time to tear the stuff up. And then once they realize that they're gonna get run off the playground every night, they're gonna stop hanging out there. And have we turned the Wi-Fi off yet, or is it still Wi-Fi on at ten o'clock at night?
It's still on.
That's...
But, you know, I don't, absolutely, I don't think that's as much of the issue as... That's why they're here.
That's exactly.
The other thing is, with his camera, you can move it and place the box. Or you have a problem area, you put up his trail camera, or he's at the library, or he's deep in the woods, or where you can, it's more bold and a set of cameras right out here.
To let it spill.
Well, there's, you know, there's precautions to that too. There's two things you do. One, you can get these, they, they make lock boxes that you can put on there. And not that it can't be stolen, but it makes it really hard if you got a video of them doing it.
We're looking at it, I'm gonna see it.
Right, because it sends it to the, and, but also, what I like to do, so people don't steal mine, is I just put them up where you can't reach them. Unless they got a lot of them.
Well, we got a flagpole out there.
We don't have to hash it all out now, but I think we need to talk about it.
I think it's worth it, best to... I, I think we need to do something.
All right, give us, give us a link to the town manager, a link to those cameras and, uh...
Just make sure that we get something and we get a few more before it...
The lights, it's...
I think you can get it.
Mr. Knight.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Abell.
Still got the same complaint, I don't understand why the highway department cannot come in here and clean these drop boxes.
We, we had brought it up, uh, at least twice since... State.
It's, says state highway department, that's a state highway. You know, the one that would do the job, somebody needs to be able to do the job, but that's part of the job.
So you contact VDOT again tomorrow and tell them, you know, if you have some...
Is there a way we can get VDOT to come to our next meeting so we can hit them with everything we got?
What was, uh, I, I know the county has a better relationship with VDOTs, why isn't our supervisor...
We, we actually...
...in the election year?
We got a whole lot of votes.
We, we've actually got a good relationship with them, it's just the drop boxes.
I have the same problem in verbal version. I have the same problem getting the VDOT up there.
Because they, when we responded, we gave them a whole list of things after that one flood and they came in like, and then two days it's all fixed up.
Much better than it used to be, yeah.
Mr. Miskavick?
Uh, just a couple of things. Um, I know last year we, um, asked the school board to not move graduation to homecoming date. And I think it was too late last year. Do we know what it is next year?
Saturday.
Conflicts? Oh, I mean, next year, is graduation also conflicting with homecoming?
I don't know.
I don't know if they've set the graduation, do they set the graduation date next year this summer? When they adopt their calendar.
I thought it...
Have they adopted their calendar?
Are they gonna graduate this week?
Yeah, Saturday. Yeah, Saturday.
I thought, is this Memorial Day weekend?
No, it's homecoming weekend.
Oh, no, I know, but I mean, I thought they did it on Memorial Day weekend. All my kids graduate on Memorial Day weekend.
Uh, Mayor, can we engage with our school board representative?
I can send them my other letter.
I appreciate it.
Like we did last year.
Uh, and then, um, those of you on council several years ago, we, uh, we had a major employer roundtable where we brought together all the, uh, major employers and heard that, I, I'd like to, uh, do that again this year sometime this summer, probably later in the summer. Organize it just to hear out the concerns, comments, questions of major employers. So if anyone's interested in participating on that with me.
Never got an invite.
Ma- major employer?
Thirty people.
That's major for this area.
What do you consider major?
I'm sorry?
What do you consider major? Crewe has major.
Uh, so the, uh, the fifty largest employers, I, I think the, uh, the ten...
Fifty largest.
Ten minus, uh, you guys have...
Two hundred, twenty-three people that work in these small businesses out here.
Well, we also had a small business roundtable, their Main Street roundtable, I believe, uh, shortly thereafter. But just to, uh, just to hear their comments, questions, thoughts, concerns, engage in businesses and cultivate those, uh, those relationships a little bit more.
All right.
Other than that, happy homecoming.
All right, good deal. Uh, no run this year, right?
Uh, no, there are, the fire department and, uh, ladies and gentlemen is actually having one on, around Halloween. It'll be a costume related run.
My wife will be happy to hear that. She's the runner. All right, with that in mind, return to the public comment section again, yes, ma'am.
Yes, I'd like to invite everybody again to the homecoming to support them. And we haven't had too much good luck this past two years for the rain.
It's supposed to be nice as well.
Yes. And also thank you all for the trash pickup, but I think it ought to be more. Because people's yards, the alleys, it's awful. And isn't there an ordinance against these abandoned vehicles? And by having the, uh, the ordinance already out there, could that push things? Because there is one, George Van Arsdale was the instigator of it, and I was that.
None of that too.
And I'm having speeding problems.
What road?
Hmm?
What road?
Melody Lane. It's just like a racetrack, day and night. Now, the police are coming up and down, but they're not there at the right times.
Would you like for them to sit in the yard and do some traffic, uh, where you, why don't they sat there and did the...
No, they were going up on the corner right there at the rock four. And I think they caught four or five just...
What's, what's the right time of day to hit?
It's time of getting up in, so, but it's time of getting up.
And I'm still having trouble with our problem we've talked about. Facilities.
All right.
Night moving. It's night and moving.
Can you talk to the chief about, uh, running radar on that road? Okay, that, perfection. Um, good. Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Public comments, um, just to let you know, just a comment. My credit card number was stolen for, off my credit card at your gas station, just to let you know, this was a lot of year ago. Um, I, we traced it back to, I was able to trace it back to when I used the card and it was traced back to your, your gas station. So regardless of your cameras, somebody managed to put a camera at, on one of your pumps, seriously. And my credit card number was stolen, it was used up in Northern Virginia. They, they ran up about a twenty-five hundred dollar bill. How, how, what they... What they did, what I was told they did, 'cause I knew where I had used the card, and, 'cause I always use the card at your gas station. I don't use that card anywhere else. Um, I got notified by the bank and somebody had literally.
That happened a year ago?
About a year ago. I'm just letting you know, that's just a comment, and it made me think about it with the cameras, because what kind of camera we get is, is very important, it's really significant, okay, just a comment. Um, when you guys talk about co-op grocery store, I think another person to consider talking to would be Jonathan, um, at Country Basket. I don't think anybody is aware how profitable that little stand is, but he does, he has an outstanding business there, and part of the reason that business is so outstanding is because what he has there is always fresh. He knows how to run that market.
Yeah, I think the Country Basket.
Uh, but the peach, uh, but the peach standing. The peach standing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, just a comment. Okay, that, I think, is another avenue to look into. Um, and when I hear you guys talk about the mapping of the cemetery, as you all know, my husband does the, has mapped that, and he's tracked it daily, and I'm led to wonder if the program that he uses, which we just updated this year, um, could be offered in any way to the town, you know, 'cause he had, he had all of his work published at the library, actually, um, mapping.
What's he got it on Excel or, or do you know what kind?
It's on an Excel, I think it's on an Excel spreadsheet, but he uses a program called Brothers Keepers, and it's very detailed. I mean, he has gone and he checks the, um, the death notices in, I don't know, five or six different newspapers every single day to, to be able to update that.
I want to, can you check with your fantasy of Brothers Keepers would be, you know, they could download everything if it's of value.
Because I know that Ray would be more than willing to, just to donate that type of information and continue to work that as he has, and he'll work that until the day he dies. He, he loves the graveyard. So I think that he's a great source of information there. Um, in regards to your question, the internet is still on at the library, and it is a problem, because I come home often when I go to Richmond, and I drive, I usually come in around somewhere between nine and eleven at night, and you see the kids out here all the time, and they're, you know, they're playing with their phones, they're on the internet, so. And that just attracts trouble, so the library needs to turn that off.
We approached them twice at least, and I think, uh, we pretty much got dismissed, so I gotta, we gotta figure out how.
Gotcha. Okay, and, and last but not least, I had approached Wade earlier this week about the sidewalks. I was approached, it's interesting what I get as the chairman of president, I get a lot of inquiry about things to buy, all kinds of things. But I was approached by, uh, a company that repairs sidewalks.
Yes, ma'am.
For a significantly less cost than it would cost to replace sidewalks. And I scheduled a meeting with him on June fifth to hear more of what, uh, what he has to talk about. But he's, they've been, this company, I did some research, they've been in this sixteen years, and he said that they can repair certain, certain sidewalk cracks and, you know, when they're uneven, um, for less than a hundred dollars, uh, a, a location. Their company is willing to come in and do a, for free, a full survey and report on our community and tell us just exactly what it take. So I'm looking into that right now, because the wash bucket is interest, may be interested in getting involved in that, and that's how I, it came through the chamber, but I'm thinking about it for the wash bucket, and then of course we have to come into town. And when I talked to Wade, he said, well, VDOT owns the sidewalks, and that's always a problem. So I called Jeff, which is Ray's son, 'cause Jeff works for VDOT, and Jeff said, this is what you do, Sue. VDOT will do everything in their power to not help you. So what you do as a citizen is call VDOT and call the three hundred number. And, and, um, what to take to them is that they're not ADA compliant, and that we have people in our town that cannot pass on sidewalks with their wheelchairs. And we do have residents in this town that are very disabled and are in those. And that's the approach that we would have to take. So he said, but it really is best coming from the citizens. And then, um, and then push, and he said, be really nice to them the first time, be really nice to them the second time, and the third time, throw, throw the ADA. So I'm just letting you know, but that's something I'm investigating right now with, for the wash bucket.
That's good.
Is that okay? Okay, so that's it.
If that in mind, yes, ma'am.
Just one last comment. Um, I'm convinced that we can do better in terms of our economic development. It calls me personally to have to drive to Blackstone, I'm nervous going to a grocery store. Uh, I still haven't figured out how to get my clothes dry cleaned without taking them with me every time I travel to bring them back. I mean, these are just everyday services that I think residents come to rely on. So if the council is putting together an economic development committee or working, revising our plan, because I think that we don't have the data that we can present to a Walmart or some other smaller, mid-level store that may be interested in coming to town, I would gladly volunteer my time, so I'm making that commitment to you publicly.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you.
That's good. Alright, with that in mind, we do not leave, yes, sir.
Yeah, and I just want to piggyback off of this drugstore that we're talking about. Did Taylor Crew owns this gum factory?
No.
No.
Uh, can we get some attention on that, because it appears that they are cutting the grass that's, and trees that's running beside the building, and they're just cutting all this stuff down and just let, let, just let it lie there. They're not doing any cutting at all. Somebody should be able to speak to them, maybe 'cause after all.
I can speak to all of them. Alright. With that in mind, we do not leave for the executive session. Uh, we'll entertain a question, two adjournments.
I don't know.
Motion, secular.
Budget.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by the Senate.
Budget.
Budget.
In the next month, can't we?
Yeah, 'cause we just had the first hearing.
Yeah, the first hearing. We gotta have a second hearing next month.
We don't have to.
We don't have to.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Alright.
That's already been.
You even voted on it yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just.
Well, I don't know if anybody has some struggling going on.
I mean, is, is it a necessity to vote on the?
You need to give it a hand, you need to, of course, you take something that happens.
You can brown out your motion or everything, so.
Alright.
Well, you would just have to agree.
Hey, did y'all, look, look at what you said. Did y'all email a copy of the new budget? Because I didn't get it.
Yes.
Yes.
No, I didn't see it.
Let, let's wait until next month, so everyone has an opportunity to review it again.
Keep in mind, if you make any changes, you're gonna have to.
I know, I, I know that, I'm not saying I wanna make any changes, but I would like to see something.
Did you get mine emailed?
Uh, the horses are on the script.
Did y'all get mine emailed or not?
I got yours.
I got yours.
Are we dismissed?
But it wasn't attached to you.
I, I, I hear everything, I don't know. I'm not sure.